Good evening. I'd like to call the December 19th, 2018 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please use your microphones when speaking and turn them off when finished. Thank you. Commissioners present are Commissioner Todd Sanders, Commissioner Dick Schmidt, Commissioner Jim Duggan, myself, Bernice Bagnall. Commissioner Doane is excused because he is wisely taking his wife to Maui for their 50th wedding anniversary. We will start with reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
We will kick off this part of the meeting as we always do with Safety Minute, and Mike Britch, the Design and Construction Manager for the Willamette Water Supply Program, will present the Safety Minute this evening. Mike?
Hey. Good evening, Commissioners Bagnall, Commissioners. So, this safety moment is not like the 10 other I've seen recently at the program that are all about holiday safety. So, you're not going to see that, but it's still relevant and timely. So, it's related to the recent earthquake up in Anchorage, and I have family members up there, and so it's a little bit related to something I've learned following that. So, you probably saw this picture on the news. I'm going to talk a bit, a little bit about it later in another presentation as well. So, not to skip kind of the main safety message you see is if an earthquake happens, you want to drop, you want to get under something secure, cover your head, and your neck and hold on. But, the kind of aspect I'd like to talk about is communication. So, what happens after event? When you have family, loved ones, you're trying to communicate. So, there's a couple different categories of communications. There's the agency-related ones, related to recovery and response, and so there's a quote from FEMA that talks about communications as one of the most common types of failures during disasters. So, it's really important for the recovery, you know, following these natural disasters. But what about personal communications when you're trying to get ahold of family members? And so, you know, was a week ago Friday when it happened, a couple hours later, I finally saw on the news that was going on, and then I started thinking about my family up there and trying to reach out. And so, you know, some of the things I learned was there were power disruptions going on which affected communications. Some of the service providers were not up and running, so that affected communications. The first thing I did was started texting family members, and I, you know, almost immediately got a response from a sister and a couple nieces, so that worked out really well. In other cases, emails was the way that I got information. And then, the final was social media. So, Facebook, by checking on people and their posts, and so, Facebook had this really cool thing where people could kind of designate, "Hey, I'm okay," and that, you know, popped up when you're checking their Facebook message. But what I found is that there was no single source, and calling people on the phone too. So, I kind of, I kind of used all different forms for different family members, and what I found was that there was not just one source of communication that was reliable. And so, you know, with that in mind, it's good to have multiple means of communications in mind for normal day operations, but also in emergency times as well. I also found that the emergency responders used social media. So, here's a page that they, that linked on Facebooks from the Anchorage Police Department. So, they gave you updates on communication, transportation, hospitals, and other tips as well. So, and then the final just item I'd leave you with is, you know, always have a contact that's out of the area that family members know to contact you with. So, that's my safety moment.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear your family is okay.
I'll have more in a minute.
We have several other updates this evening. First is talking a little bit about water main breaks. So, during the past month, TBWD has had no less than 14 main breaks, although I think we're now up to 16 main breaks. Main breaks often happen during cold weather because the cold temperatures cause soil movement around the pipe, and that increases the stresses in the pipe, and so that results in breaks occasionally with weakened pipes. So, what I really wanted to talk about this evening was how to report a main break. So, customers who suspect they see a main break or a leak, obviously the leak showing up is water that's showing up on the surface where it shouldn't be, those customers need to call TBWD at (503) 848-3000. Customers can call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and speak to a real-life person as opposed to speaking to voicemail. And so, we respond to those calls, and then we are able to dispatch our crews and respond quickly to main breaks, and repairs are often completed within a couple of hours, and typically with only localized disruptions to water service. So, if customers think they see a main break, or they see water where it's not supposed to be, please don't call 911, which seems a little counterintuitive, but if you call 911, it only slows down our ability to respond to the event, and of course, it also pulls police and firefighters away from responding to public safety emergencies. So, again, if you think you see a main break or a leak and you want to report it, please call TBWD at (503) 848-3000. What I actually want to pull the board related to a cryptosporidium issue. So, on Monday, December 10th, Portland detected two additional cryptosporidium oocysts in a water sample collected from the Bull Run Headworks. As always, the latest Portland cryptosporidium results are available at the Portland website, Portland Water Bureau's website. But, it occurs to me that we've made a point of reporting these cryptosporidium-positive samples to the board at the televised board meetings when they come up, largely because we wanted to keep our customers informed of that issue. Now, it's almost seeming like they're happening all the time, and we continue to refer interested customers to the Portland Water Bureau and their website. And so, my question to the board at this point is, do you want me to continue to report these positive cryptosporidium samples at the televised board meetings to reach out to those customers that are watching this evening? Or, are you okay with us essentially providing updates to the board and the public using other means like the district's website and/or newsletters and that kind of thing? So, it's really what works best for the board and the best use of your board meeting time.
Well, as long as the public is informed, I really don't have any problem with which method is used.
Yeah, I think both and. I think a short summary like you're doing now, and making it, making the public aware on the website. I don't believe we need to buy PSA or obtain PSA announcements on commercial television, but I think as long as we make the normal disclosure, that I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
And I appreciate hearing them from you. Aren't they already on TBWD website as well, if I remember right?
Yes.
So...
Yeah.
I would stay as is with you reporting them to us and, of course, having the website information.
I'll continue with what we've been doing in the past.
I agree. I like getting the reports, and it gives us a chance to interact with you about how serious it is and how frequent it is, and sort of keeps the issue on the radar screen.
Very good. I will, I will do so. Last month, I'd reported that we were very close to obtaining a key permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that would allow continued construction of the Willamette Water Supply System. Well, this month, I can report that the permit is now in hand. We have received the report. This was the permit, this was a permit that was required under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. It's a big darn deal for the Willamette Water Supply Program, and so, it's now signed, sealed, and delivered, and congratulations and a special thanks to Dave Kraska and the entire program team on this major accomplishment, and continued progress on the Willamette Water Supply System construction. A little bit of personal news, as many of you know, I serve on the Board of Directors for the Water Research Foundation. Earlier this month, I was elected to the Water Research Foundation's Board of Directors to serve as the Chair of the Water Research Foundation Research Advisory Committee, or RAC. As Chair of the RAC, I'll be leading a committee of 20 leading experts in the field of water treatment, public health, environmental management, and utility management to prioritize several million dollars worth of research each year. We will also be consolidating the Foundation's research programs for drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and water reuse research. So, I'm very fortunate, this is the third time over the course of my career that I've had the honor and been asked to serve as the RAC Chair, and my new term now runs through 2020. So, I think it's a great opportunity to stay engaged in the water industry, to continue to keep my skills sharp and knowledge sharp in terms of evolving technologies and information related to a field that I have tremendous passion for, so. Schedule updates. So, you know, typically, we would have a work session on February 5th. As you know, because of Commissioner travel schedules, we've had to reschedule that, and so I just wanted to be clear with everyone that we will have a special work session on Tuesday, January 29th at 6:00 PM here at the district. That will provide a great opportunity to work with the board and discuss some options available to us in terms of the financial plan, as well as strategies related to main replacement and investments in aging infrastructure. So, I think it's a great meeting, and I'm glad we were able to adjust the schedules to be able to accommodate everybody's schedule. And with that, I'm ready to turn it back to Mike Britch, who will provide the department report this evening, and I'm told it's one of those edge-of-your-seat presentations, so take it away, Mike. Not to, not to overhype it, but I'm really looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you. So, this presentation is entitled "The Cost of Seismic Resiliency," and really, this was initially in response to a question that was asked of the Willamette Water Supply Program, former executive committees, so Mark Knutson and Kevin Hanway from the City of Hillsborough. How much does it cost to add and incorporate seismic resiliency? And so, I'll get to that at the end of this presentation. So, the outline for this, I'm going to start by just giving, again, a couple examples of recent earthquakes. Talk a little bit about the cost associated with not being resilient, and primarily just in economic terms, not in terms of human lives, which is really significant, and that's a whole subject in itself. And if you think about four of the last major earthquakes in relatively recent times, including Pakistan, China, Haiti, and the Indian Ocean earthquake in 2014, there is approximately 600,000 people who lost their lives from just those four earthquakes. So, the human toll is significant and profound as well. Talk a little bit about seismic level of service goals, our approach to seismic mitigation, some examples in the industry of what others have found that it costs, and then finally get into the question of what do we think it's costing the program to achieve these goals? So, back to examples. I'll start again here with Anchorage. So, I grew up there, my family, a lot of my family is still up there. This is probably one of the pictures that you saw. That little arrow right there shows you kind of where it happened in town, a little bit later in the morning, it was this picture. So, that's off Minnesota Boulevard. There's a couple main north-south roads through Anchorage. It's, there's the off-ramp you take if you're going to the airport. So, you could have been driving along, catching a plane at the airport at 8:30 in the morning, and all of a sudden, the road drops out. So, pretty scary. If you're heading south out of town, so along the inlet here, there's kind of cliffs and mountains to the one side, it was closed because of rockfall. So, again, pretty significant impacts. Back to communications with my family members. So, here's a couple of the quotes that, you know, immediate response after I got in touch with them. So, one of my sisters said, "That was very scary. We don't have power. That was horrible." My niece said, "It was very, very scary. Ceiling tiles falling on us, roads splitting, bridges down." When I talked to my sister later on Saturday, she said, "Well, she just got to work, she's up on the sixth floor of the building, getting ready to start her day, and the shaking started, and it shook for over a minute really strong." So, it was, it was a pretty profound earthquake for the Anchorage region. If you're going north out of town, this is what happened to the highway system where part of the bank failed. And then, another example, there's a little map insert. So, the area to the south is Anchorage, the little kind of dots represent where the earthquake happened, but the blue dot was Wasilla, and so this was one of the highways in the Wasilla area where the, where the ground essentially liquefied and the banks failed. And so, in these kinds of earthquake events, if you have the right kind of soils and high groundwater, soft soils, the ground can essentially turn to a liquid and it just flows. It's unable to support the load above it, and so that's, that's what happened here. Let me give you another quick example. So, this was not too long ago, the earthquake in Indonesia, and so you can, you can look at the statistics there, but what's more impressive is a video I'm going to play here. So, this is, this is some satellite imagery. I'm not sure of the time between the segments, but that is ground liquefying for literally thousands of feet. So, you can see the roads and the houses and the neighborhoods that existed, but, you know, that's what can happen in a very large scale. And this is a form of permanent ground deformation, and this kind of permanent ground deformation is one of the ones that we need to address in places on the program. So, I'll just stop it here. So, let's talk a little bit about the cost of not being resilient in terms of economic, the economy, and economic considerations. So, first, I want to start with that this large water infrastructure system that we're building, well, it's, it's part of a complex, multimodal, interdependent system of infrastructure. We need other infrastructure to support ours as we support other infrastructure systems. And the American Society for Civil Engineers says that infrastructure is the backbone of the U.S. economy and a necessary input to every economic output. It is critical to the nation's prosperity and the public health and welfare. So, let's, let's kind of test that with the scenario here. So, let's think about the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Long Beach as an example. So, the largest container and cargo port in the United States supports numbers of jobs, just a huge volume of commerce passes through this port. And if there were a large earthquake in the Los Angeles area, and it affected the port and other things, it could have a serious impact on the local economy of Los Angeles, California, and the entire nation. So, a couple related facts. So, Los Angeles, in terms of economic size, is the third-largest metropolitan area in the world, and California, by itself, has the fifth-largest economy in the world after the United States, China, Japan, and Germany. So, it is this huge economic engine, and if you have this large natural disaster, it can have and will have a severe economic impact on the region, the nation, and worldwide commerce. So, FEMA has identified a number of critical infrastructure, and the top four they've identified include power, electrical, roads, communications, and water. And so, another example of the impact, again, from Los Angeles, is they think that the water system is the utility most vulnerable to earthquake damage, and that damage could be the largest cause of economic disruption following the earthquake. So, lack of water could impede recovery, lead to business failure, and lead to mass evacuation if things just are not functional in your area. So, let's, here's an example of the aftermath of an earthquake. So, this is from the, related to the 1906 San Francisco earthquake, second-largest fire loss in the history of the United States. So, related to that event, the economic disruption from the earthquake immediately reduced the United States' GNP by 1.5% to 1.8%. The capital outflow prompted the Bank of England to raise interest rates, discriminate against American requests for loans. The British Bank policy pushed the United States into recession and set the stage for a financial crisis. So, there's these cascading effects economically of these kinds of disruptions. Here's another example from a different kind of natural disaster, Hurricane Katrina and its impact on New Orleans. And so, you see two lines up there. They represent the gross domestic product in terms of billions of dollars for, in the purple line, New Orleans, and by comparison, another city in the area in the south, Nashville. And so, what we see is both of them are growing as an economy until you hit 2005, when Katrina happened, and from that point, the economy of New Orleans dropped off and has sort of bumped along, and by comparison, Nashville kept going. So, again, an example of these large natural disasters on the economy of a region. Back to the population leaving. So, you see two lines up there related to the population of two cities. In blue, San Francisco, leading up to the 1906 earthquake where the arrow is pointing, and then below that, the population of Los Angeles, which took off after the earthquake. And so, the quote here says, "The San Francisco initially dropped in population, later experienced only limited growth, whereas the population of Los Angeles grew fivefold after the 1906 earthquake struck San Francisco." So, people didn't have the infrastructure to support them, they just left. If you didn't have a good reason to stay, you leave the area. And so, you know, another quote back to Katrina, they saw the same thing, where hundreds of thousands of people left. I asked my mom, who my mom and all the rest of my family were around for the 1964 earthquake, and my mom said the same thing, and after that earthquake, a lot of people just left, Anchorage left Alaska. So, let's talk about trying to achieve certain goals. So, for, related to seismic level of service goals, so you, so you need to have a goal in mind, you need to know what you're trying to achieve, you need to understand that. And so, here's a really good quote that I like related to that, and the quote goes, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there." Any guess who said that or who that's from? Well, it was by, it was by Lewis Carroll, but it was a Cheshire Cat answering Alice in Wonderland when she asked him, "Which road should I take?" So, you need to know where you're trying, what you're trying to achieve and where you're trying to go. Well, how do we do that in terms of water infrastructure and this major kind of seismic event? So, you know, we're really fortunate that in Oregon, and that this Oregon resilience plan has really laid out a great guideline for different infrastructure systems, and really, it's a model for the nation in this kind of thinking. And so, it talks about different types of level of service goals related to different infrastructure systems. And so, for the Water Supply Program, this, this table kind of shows in the three different columns. The first column represents the different components that make up the Willamette Water Supply System. What are our adopted level of service goals in the middle, and then what did the Oregon resilience plan say? And so, we're generally in, in conformance with all of their recommendations, we've just refined ours a little bit more. And so, essentially, all of our pipelines need to be operational, you know, post-event, and we have goals of being up and running with pumping and treatment within, within a couple days. And so, what's the main event that we're thinking about? Well, there are several seismic hazards in the area, but obviously, the primary one is the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. And so, the image you see up there represents just a planning scenario that FEMA put together, but it represents the full magnitude nine subduction zone earthquake, full fault rupture starting on, in Northern California, then proceeding across the Oregon-Washington coast and landing, ending in British Columbia. So, see the different statistics up there, but ground shaking for up to five minutes. That's kind of what happened up in Anchorage during the 1964 earthquake as well. So, really, for us and the kind of water infrastructure we're talking about, it really boils down to, we, the Willamette Water Supply System is this critical backbone for the region, and so, the Oregon resilience plan says this backbone needs to really be capable of supplying the needs to the community while all the other non-essential or non-backbone components are being fixed. So, just to boil it down in simple terms, nothing important can break on our system. So, I'd like to talk a little bit our approach to seismic mitigation. So, it starts by understanding the problem. And so, there's a picture of Dr. Thomas O'Rourke. He's a professor in Cornell, from Cornell University, one of the leading experts nationally and internationally related to the design of pipelines to address seismic issues. And so, he was out here some time ago, and we interviewed him, and one of the things he talked about in solving the problem, it's, it's not like you necessarily, it's a problem that has to be solved everywhere, but, but there are a few key areas that you really need to address because those are the problems or the most, the biggest challenges in addressing those. And so, we've really tried to apply the right level of mitigation depending on the site-specific threats that we're dealing with. So, some of the different types of approaches involve site-specific designs. In a few key areas, there's some things that you really need to deal with in appropriate manner to address it. You need to limit stresses in the materials that are involved with your infrastructure. You need to identify what are those appropriate limits. There's not a lot of great information out there for what is the right limits, and that part of what we've done is identify those. And then, another strategy is just avoidance. And so, the picture that you see to the right represents our alignment for a tunnel crossing underneath the Twolleton River there. So, part of the avoidance represents just keeping your shafts associated with that and your tunnel out of the areas that are going to move. And so, there's a, there's a kind of a dash line on both sides of the river, and those represent the areas that we expect the ground to move laterally towards the river. And so, in applying this approach, we've just located our shafts outside of those areas and went sufficiently deep to avoid those areas of movement. So, that's, that's a strategy to achieve seismic mitigation. So, now I want to move into talking about, well, what does this cost? And so, start by trying to identify, well, what's out there in the industry to even compare against? And so, I only have a few examples, again, because they just don't exist. So, this is related to building systems. This is a couple of our schools that were recently built in the Beaverton School District, and so, basically, what they found, without knowing exactly what their specific level of service goals, but as an adder to the project, it resulted in about a 1% to 1.5% adder to achieve their seismic resiliency goals. So, this is the only example I could find related to water infrastructure, and again, it's back to the Los Angeles system, so Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. So, it is the largest municipal utility in the United States, and recently, in 2014, they had the summary report where they established a plan to achieve resilience and sustainability as part of this program. And so, they plan on spending $12 to $15 billion over the next 20 years, about 25% associated with pipelines. But, here's a quote from one of their kind of key people, the guy who leads their resilience program, Dr. Craig Davis. He thinks their premium as an adder for the pipe replacement projects was about 4% to 5%. So, a little bit of anecdotal information out there in the industry. So, we can tuck that away, and now kind of look at, kind of, how did we come up with and what do we think the premium is related to the Willamette Water Supply System? So, the approach that we took was, we went through kind of the full list of projects, I'm not going to go through these in detail, but looked at each one of the projects that that's a main component to the Willamette Water Supply Program, and we tried to identify, what are those specific elements that we added to each project to help us achieve our seismic resiliency goals? So, you know, one of the largest ones is this raw water facility. So, this is that pumping facility right next to the Willamette River in Wilsonville, where the water kind of enters the system and begins its conveyance through our system. And so, this is an area where we expect that kind of lateral spreading. You saw it in the video and the pictures, when the shaking starts, because you have liquefiable soils and that exposed bank, we expect movement. So, to mitigate that, our designers are working on a system of ground improvements that involves jet grouting and other things to, to limit the movement to an acceptable level. But that's, that's a large cost adder, and so, in the case of the raw water facilities, for example, we think we're adding- And so in the case of the raw water facilities, for example, we think we're adding $24 million just on that one project to address that. But on other projects, so I'll use the second one example, that's a number of our pipeline projects, we're just following good standard industry design, and it's really no adder to it, but it's understanding kind of what the problem is and making sure that that standard design is appropriate for that project setting. And actually, on this bottom one here, so PLM 5, that's a pipeline, we just had a meeting yesterday that talked about what we're doing for a thousand-foot of pipeline along Shoals Ferry. And what we found, because we know what we're looking for and what we need to address, that there's this section that just has a really mild slope, about 3 to 4%, and based on the weak soils and the geotechnical investigation that they did, they still expect about six feet of movement. And so based on that knowledge, what we did is did some really minor modifications. We adjusted the profile to kind of get this high point out of it, so everything's kind of more uniform through there. We changed our joints. All of that at a very nominal cost to greatly improve the seismic resilience of that specific part of the system. So again, knowing, you know, what's your end goal in mind? What are the limits on the materials? What are the kinds of threats that you need to address? And then what's a cost-effective way to achieve that? And so this is my final slide here. So again, back to our goal of achieving the level of service information that you see up there, essentially having some level of operation within a few days. Using that methodology, we added up what we think all these cost premiums are. We think it adds up to around $50 million, or that translates to about 4% adder to achieve our seismic resiliency goals. And again, fits nicely with some of the anecdotal information that we heard from LADWP as well. So still have projects in design. It's not final, but that's kind of our take on things as we see them today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. You gave me a flashback there earlier in the, I was attending the Utility Management Conference in New Orleans in 2008, and the Public Works Director asked to make a special appearance at one of the general sessions. And she came in and explained that because of Katrina, they had lost in excess of 35% of their utility staff in water and wastewater, and none of them were coming back. So she basically said, "If any of you want a job, talk to me afterward, please." You know, it's like, isn't this a nice city? Don't you want to stay? And it was, it was a sincere appeal and really kind of frightening to think about that. Questions from commissioners?
Well, thank you. That was comprehensive. I appreciate it.
If there are no questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report this evening.
Thank you. Then we will move into Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended, and we will start with Commissioner Sanders on my right.
So on December 3rd, I attended the Willamette River Water Coalition Meeting in Tigard. And then on December 4th, we had our work session here, as well as having a meeting with, I guess you call him the headhunter? Is that the right word for him? And then on, I believe, the 12th, I met with Carrie and her people on the water plan mapping and then tonight's meeting, our monthly meeting.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I also attended the fourth work session, which finances were a big part of. And also, I met with the headhunter on 1204. And then I had a meeting with Mark discussing the board agenda for this evening and tonight's regular board.
And Commissioner Duggan?
I also attended the work session we had on the 4th, where we talked about financial management policies and a few other topics like definition of public improvement and some other policy matters. Earlier that same day, I met with the recruiter or headhunter to talk about what we were looking for in terms of long-range, long-range issues with succession planning and then tonight's meeting.
Well, this is going to sound very familiar because I had the same three meetings as everyone else. On the 4th of December, I met with, for a stakeholder interview regarding the CEO recruitment and the work session where we discussed financial policies and definitions of public improvement, and then, of course, tonight's board meeting. Having concluded that portion, we will now move to topics raised by commissioners. Is there anything that you guys need to raise that I don't know about? Surprises? And then, moving to the public comment period. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they're presented. Do we have any persons tonight who would like to comment? All right, seeing none, I will move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require We have five items on the consent agenda tonight. Item A is to approve the November 28th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Item B, approve the December 4th, 2018 work session minutes. Item C, approve TVWD representative appointments and officer nominations to the Barney Reservoir Joint Ownership Commission and the Joint Water Commission for calendar year 2019. Item D, adopt resolution number 30-18, establishing regular monthly meeting dates of the Board of Commissioners for the calendar year 2019. And lastly, item E, adopt resolution number 31-18, approving an intergovernmental agreement between Washington County and the Tuolleton Valley Water District for the construction of waterline work on Southwest Jenkins Road from Southwest 158th Avenue to Southwest 153rd Avenue. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving to the business agenda, first item we have is to consider adopting resolution number 32-18, approving the intergovernmental agreement between Washington County, Tuolleton Valley Water District, and the City of Hillsborough for the Willamette Water Supply Program Joint Design PLM 4.2, Tuolleton Sherwood Road, Teton to Langer Farms Parkway Pipeline Project.
Sorry.
Your project names are always so short. Staff report from Dave Craska, please.
Good evening, President Bagnall, commissioners. So I have a couple of brief items for you tonight. The first one is what President Bagnall just spoke to there. It's a design phase intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for our pipeline project PLM 4.2. So I think it's always helpful to know where in the world we're talking about. The program is pretty vast, covers a lot of terrain. So this particular project is in the Sherwood area along Tuolleton Sherwood Road. And this aerial graphic shows it a little bit better than the cartoon one before. So it's, as I said, along Tuolleton Sherwood Road bordered on the east side on Southwest 124th Avenue and on the west side by Langer Farms. The graphic here shows that pipeline a little bit short on Olds Place there, but it continues a little bit more to the west onto Langer Farms, just off this aerial right there. So an overview of this IGA is that we have been, for the duration of the program really, identifying opportunities with Washington County where we can partner, where they're doing roadworks project to get our pipeline in at the same time for all the obvious benefits, perhaps most notably, reduced impact to the public and the roads that we're working in. This project is also included in a memorandum of understanding that was executed back in 2016 for work in Tuolleton Sherwood Road and Roy Rogers Road, a broader concept that we have with Washington County. This is for design phase services only, so later IGA will be coming for construction phase services. And the cost-sharing methodology is covering a well-worn path. It's basically similar terms that we have with the PLM 5.1 project, which is a project that's currently under construction right now in Roy Rogers Road just south of Shoals Ferry Road. And as I mentioned, a construction phase IGA is going to be executed later. So a little bit of summary on some of the facts and figures about this. It's 7,400 feet of our 66-inch pipeline. This is part of our finished water pipeline, so this is downstream of the water treatment plant that's right in this same location. The design phase cost for this phase is about $2.1 million. Of the cost-sharing, where we're sharing costs with Washington County, where we're doing similar work and combining our efforts there, just shy of $200,000 there. We're expected to be complete with final design in March of 2020, and then a couple of months later after that, expecting the anticipated construction IGA to be brought to you for approval so that we can then advertise the project for construction. As far as how we are going about splitting costs with Washington County, it's just covering design activities and coordination. Where we are doing similar work and sharing those costs, those costs are split proportionally. So basically, whoever has the most need for those services pays a greater share, basically put in simple terms. Where there are independent activities, they're obviously borne by the individual entity. And we are also covering additional consultant costs for Washington County. So where Washington, where we are basically by combining our projects with Washington County's project, that's an imposition on them and their consultants, and we're covering some of those costs, which frankly, is a cost savings because if we were to prepare two independent design packages, it would cost a lot more than us covering some of their additional consultant costs. And so that's it for the summary, close with a recommendation that the board adopt resolution 32-18 and the long paragraph description there of the resolution. So I don't think you want me to read it all out again, so be glad to take any questions.
No, but I have to.
Exactly.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 32-18, approving the intergovernmental agreement between Washington County, Tuolleton Valley Water District, and the City of Hillsborough for the Willamette Water Supply Program Joint Design PLM 4.2, Tuolleton Sherwood Road, Teton to Langer Farms Parkway Pipeline Project?
So moved. A second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And for my next trick.
You did.
The next item of business is for the board to consider adopting resolution number 33-18, approving the intergovernmental agreement amendment one between Washington County, Tuolleton Valley Water District, and the City of Hillsborough for the Willamette Water Supply Program Joint Design PLM 4.1, Highway 99 Crossing Pipeline, and Tuolleton Sherwood Road, Langer Farms Parkway to Boerchers Drive.
Thank you again. If you liked that last one, you'll like this one even more. This is an even quicker presentation, but again, a little bit of orientation about where we are in the world. We're just west along Tuolleton Sherwood Road, crossing Highway 99, going up to Roy Rogers Road, and still in Sherwood, that part of the world. This, again, is an aerial graphic, shows exactly where that is on Tuolleton Sherwood Road up to Roy Rogers Road across Highway 99. Again, a Washington County project that we're going to get our pipeline in there while they're doing that roadway expansion and intersection work. 4,600 linear feet of our 66-inch pipeline, a continuation of that last project. So the board yourselves originally approved the IGA, the original version of it, back in the March 2017 meeting, and it was executed that summer, I believe it was in June that we got the final terms on that. And this is, again, for, provide for cooperation and cost-sharing for the design phase of this particular project. We needed to amend it, though, because some things changed. We found that the schedule changed, there were some delays on the county side that we had to move our project alone, so some of the dates that we had in the original IGA, we just couldn't hold to, so we had to change that. And while we were changing that, we also found that during that time, there were some staffing changes, some people that were named in the IGA that had to get corrected, and also some cost-sharing because the scope, the project changed a bit in a little ways. One major change, for example, is the original concept was that we were going to go trenchless or tunneling across Highway 99. It would, it's a lengthy process, it would take a long time, it's quite expensive. The design team worked very hard to find a way to actually open trench cut across Highway 99. And ODOT is, we believe, we have high expectation that ODOT will allow us to do that, but it's going to be a lot of night work, it's going to be a lot of traffic control, it's going to be a very thoughtful process. And along with that, there's going to be more oversight from ODOT, more approvals, and so there's some additional costs there, but broadly, we're saving a lot of money on the overall project by making this change. So it's another thing that we want to capture in this particular IGA. And again, construction phase IGA is coming later. And with that, that's my summary introduction of this IGA amendment. Be glad to take any questions, but otherwise, we recommend the board adopt resolution 33-18.
I forgot to ask if anyone had any questions on the last one, but I assume you'll speak up if you do. So in that case, do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 33-18, approving the intergovernmental agreement amendment one between Washington County, Tuolleton Valley Water District, and the City of Hillsborough for the Willamette Water Supply Program Joint Design PLM 4.1, Highway 99 Crossing Pipeline, and Tuolleton Sherwood Road, Langer Farms Parkway to Boerchers Drive?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And last on the agenda, the business agenda, is to consider adopting resolution number 34-18, adopting the 2018 Water Master Plan update. And Nick Augustus will give us the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagnall, members of the board. It's my pleasure to present the summary of the master plan update to you tonight. It's been a lot of work with internal staff, with some support from Corolla engineers, and wanted to just provide a brief overview of what we'll be talking about, wanted to review some of the major content and talk about why this update was necessary. We had previously done a water master plan in 2015, and so this is just a brief update to that. And I'll walk through some of the chapter highlights and a brief summary. But as far as where the master plan fits into the overall schema project delivery, sort of the start, it kind of helps provide the vision to accomplishing the Tuolleton Valley Water District mission and values. So as you can see here, the master plan feeds into asset management, into the capital improvement program, and eventually, delivery of the project. So the necessity for this update, we walked through, we had three major items that we wanted to address. First off was the Willamette Water Supply Integration. Right now, we have a better understanding of the scope, better understanding of the turnouts, and where those will come into the system. The other item, City of Beaverton withdrawal, we wanted to make sure we addressed that and planned appropriately for our internal capital improvement projects. And then the Miller Hill Road ASR update, we wanted to make sure we had improvements in place to meet fire flow in the absence of that ASR. So first off, just a brief update on the water pipeline inventory. As of July 1st this year, about 41 miles of pipeline became assets of City of Beaverton, and we retained 752 miles in our system. And this figure just shows a breakdown of which pipes are owned by which entity and the description of the water system. We currently have 21 active reservoirs. The Grabhorn Reservoir is currently under construction, and we hope to have online by summer. Inglewood Reservoir is offline for
to have online by summer. Inglewood Reservoir is offline for repairs, and we have 12 booster pump stations, 58 PRV stations. One of the major chapters of the master plan update is setting the level of service goals, and these are meant to align with the district's mission, uh, vision, mission, and values. And with those, we ran through several different scenarios for normal operations, different events we wanted to plan for, et cetera. And so as we walked through these levels of service of goals, we were able to do some modeling with, with Corolla engineers and evaluate really three different types of zones in the, in the system. One with, um, zones with storage, zones with more than one source of supply and storage, and then zones without storage. And each zone, we wanted to make sure we evaluated how it would react with fire flow and try to determine which projects are necessary to keep the system functioning as we would like. So the level of service goals, we addressed reliable capacity, firm capacity, and peak capacity, and the different fire flow criteria as listed there. There's three different areas. Single-family residential has a different rating than non-residential, 1,500 gallons per minute versus 3,500 gallons per minute. And then multifamily residential fits there in the middle of 2,500 gallons per minute. And with those, we're able to, um, project what we would need as far as improvements in the system. We also provided an update to the water system requirements as far as average day demand, max day demands, and so we projected those out, updated those from the 2015 master plan. We also updated the water loss estimates with Wolf Creek and Metzger coming in, in 2018, got an estimated water loss of less than 5%. And some of the recent changes, we had some meter upgrades to our Portland supply that helped us sort of dial in our confidence level of, of these estimates, as well as some additional spatial allocation we were able to do with, with our GIS. We were able to link that with, with specific meters and, and have a little more confidence in, in our water loss estimate numbers. As far as water resources, an update there was, was to, um, forecast what sources we would be utilizing in, in the future for our water supply, and also the projection we wanted to take into account the Beaverton Withdrawal area. So you'll see on this figure, there's, there's a little bit of a dip in 2024, and that is to account for the Beaverton Withdrawal coming off the system. Water quality chapter, address water quality standards, and an update to that was the monitoring for copper and lead. And previously, we were monitoring twice a year, and it was part of the overall, um, it was done as part of the Portland monitoring, and so recent, recently we were able to go away from that, and now we're performing annual monitoring for that. And as you can see, our, our levels here are much lower than the action level, and which allow us to go to the annual monitoring. System operations, this was the bulk of the update, is running through all the different scenarios and incorporating these three major changes. And with that, we tried to, we did a water age evaluation, looked at the water age in the system currently, and with these improvements that we're expecting with the Willamette coming online in 2026, we wanted to evaluate what the water, water age looks like at that point. And also, as, as we were trying to size the pipeline to connect the Metzger, Metzger Pipeline East, if there was any water age issues between the different sizing of that. And so this, these couple of figures provide a, uh, there's sort of a depiction of where we're seeing high water age in the system. And this is during a minimum day condition, so middle of winter. Where is our, our water the oldest in the system? And, and you'll see here in Cooper Mountain area, it's, um, older than, than some of the other areas. And then in 2026, once we have the Willamette online, that area improves significantly, and, uh, the bulk of that is, is due to a connection to the Willamette Supply at 209th and Farmington. Then with, with our modeling, we were able to update our capital improvements, and we updated our, our maps since the, the last time we talked. And this map basically shows the, the different projects we anticipate in the, in the 50-year horizon. So this chapter relates to the Willamette Water Supply System. We updated the turnout capacity and the sizing that we're anticipating for each connection, and forecasted what capacity we would like to see, both at the initial stage and future from the Willamette Supply. So in 2026, we anticipate 39 MGD, 40 MGD to be able to, uh, supply the, supply the district, and then we've got increments going up from there up to 50-year horizon with a total build-out capacity of 59.1 MGD. And the seismic assessment was really just a, a reminder of what was done previously in the 2015 master plan. The bulk of the seismic assessment was done at that time with some goals to implement recommendations of the Oregon Resilience Plan by 2064. With that, the, the capital improvement planning, we were able to update all, all our projects and establish priorities. There were some priorities that shifted with this process. There were, so we've, we've got different fire, fire flow, mainline replacements, reservoir replacements, and we were able to update those with the removal of the, the Beaverton Withdrawal areas. And we're going to continue to, um, modify these, these projects as, as additional information becomes available as we do more condition assessment. And these projects, of course, will get evaluated during the budget process and implemented through that process. So this, this plan summary provides update on our cost estimates that also changed since the 2015. Prices keep going up for some reason, and, uh, so we, we updated those. We're preparing for the Willamette to incorporate that into our system, so we do have some modifications internally that we need to have happen. And then, um, our mains replacement, we're, um, we would like to, to increase the, the spending of the mains replacement program up to potentially 1% a year. As our system ages, we'd like to keep, keep being able to maintain that system. And so you'll, you'll see in the, there's approximately 371 million included in this, in this proposed recommendation for that. With that, there's, we put together a short-term summary of the projects, and then a full summary of all, all the projects we anticipate over the next 50 years or so. And this master plan, again, it, it will provide an input to our planning over the next several months, especially as we're, we're developing the capital improvements program and the budget for the coming biennium. And one other update I want to mention is we reached out to OHA between the last time we met, and they were able to do a cursory review of the plan and recommended that we submit that for their approval. But we, this time unless there's questions, we would recommend that the board adopt the 2018 Water Master Plan Update.
I'd like to say that I personally appreciate the extra time we had to review the master plan update, and I really liked the matrix y'all provided, showing us which commissioners had which comments and how specifically you addressed those. That was, that was very useful. Also, Commissioner Doan, who was not with us tonight, wanted me to convey that he is happy to report that all of his issues have been appropriately addressed, and he wants to endorse this revision. Any other comments from board members?
I'd like to point out that staff did this as an in-house effort, and I was very impressed with both the presentation and the reaction to all the, the commissioners' comments and, and how well those, those things worked out. I didn't have any, any real comments myself. I kind of let my fellow commissioners do the, the major vetting, but I was very impressed with the work, and I am really impressed that this was done in-house and not farmed out to some consultant to come in and tell us what needs to be done. I, I think it just reflects the knowledge of our staff, of our system, what needs to be done, and, and the vision for the future on, on how to keep things running well. So, again, I'm very impressed and, and want to compliment staff on that.
I agree. That was a really good job.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bagnall, I just wanted to make one comment. Commissioner Sanders mentioned that the earlier part of today's meeting that he came and met with us, and I wanted to send a sincere appreciation to Commissioner Sanders and his knowledge on the map making. So you probably noticed that the colors of the maps are significantly different from the original set that, the draft that you looked at, and it's largely, almost all, due to Commissioner Sanders' feedback, and we really appreciated those feedback. And I think the maps look really fabulous now, much more, and they're much more understandable and comprehensible. So thank you again for coming out and taking time to meet with us and, and the staff to make things, this document better, more useful.
Thank you. It was, the work that you did was excellent. I appreciate being heard.
Well, do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 34-18, adopting the 2018 Water Master Plan Update?
So moved.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.